All right, this is the, it is October 4th, 7:00 PM. This is the Riverside School District 96 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Gunn?
Here.
Ms. Kaylec?
Here.
Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Ms. Claps?
Here.
Mr. Marhead?
Here.
Okay.
And I understand Ms. Hefner, Principal Hefner, is out sick tonight, so I'll hand it to you, Martha, for welcoming comments.
Sure. So Kim Hefner was sorry she was not able to join you all tonight and welcome you to Hollywood School like she loves to do, but she did send a note to me and she said, "Please make sure to share." So from Kim, she wants to say thank you to all of you for the tuck pointing, which she said was a little yucky, but she appreciates that it's been done. So that was a major maintenance project and is now completed. She also wanted to express appreciation for the new sod on the playground, which I went and checked out this evening. The playground actually really does look great. And also to share with you that they have a project where they're going to be planting raised vegetable beds with help from a Hauser Student Leadership Group as well as the Hollywood Citizens Association, and the raised beds will actually be on the HCA property. So they wanted to express a thanks and appreciation for that. And she also has shared with everybody a Hollywood pin. So the Hollywood staff, Kim is always great about getting a pin for their annual theme. This one is, "There's no place like Hollywood." So you all have a pin from Hollywood School. There you go. Welcome from Kim.
Is this just a stock pin that she found? Or did she make it?
No, I think she ordered some somewhere special.
It looks like a school.
Yeah, I think it is Hollywood School. Right, yeah, right.
Yeah. I'm guessing, yeah, it's one of those things you get the picture and they make it from a guess.
And all the teachers wore, like, their ruby red slippers on the first day, but it was like Converse and like, you know, but everyone had red shoes, too.
Got it. So Wizard Oz theme, I see. Okay. So there's a little husky in there, I think?
Yeah.
That's kind of cool.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Does anybody wish to suggest any changes to the agenda before we get into the committee discussions? Nope. Okay. So then let's jump in with personnel with Mr. Hunt, Ms. Claps.
So the Personnel Committee met last week and we had some discussion around Goal Three, which, as you all know, has to do with recruiting, developing, and retaining high-quality staff. We also had a pretty constructive discussion around succession planning and taking steps to sort of improve some of the organizational efficiency around hiring. And so it was a great discussion. I think Dan is going to share more.
Here to give an update on Goal Three, which, that is high-quality staff, which encompasses two areas we're doing work in, which is diverse workforce and personalized professional learning, so professional development for staff. Last year, as we worked through, I'm going to first talk about the diverse workforce component. As we worked through that, it was really very much a discovery year of really identifying what we don't know and trying to, we're asking a lot of questions, looking at process, seeing what processes were in place, where we might have had some gaps. And then we also looked at our, like, our online application, looking at our candidate evaluation process, what do our candidates go through in terms of? And the bulk, the bulk of what we were looking at was for certified staff for our teachers, because that is by far the largest segment of our hires. But looking at the online application from a candidate perspective, but then also looking at our recruiting practices, how can we get more people to possibly apply for positions? Looking at partnerships with universities. Then we, we didn't have a whole lot in terms of, we knew that we needed to do a level of discovery of our hiring practices and processes, which we don't have anything set, like documentation of this is how we do things. So that was identified as, as one of the needs. Then through all the way into hiring, we looked at onboarding. You know, what does that first-year experience look for new hires in District 96? So this year, the focus, we, we met yesterday and we had a really good productive meeting, but the focus of this year is now, okay, we identified what our gaps are, let's, let's start putting these structures in place, gathering information. So we've already assembled a flow chart of, of the hiring process for, working with one of our building administrators put together that, and that'll serve kind of as a base, a basis for discussions amongst our district leadership team. You know, the process probably looks the same from, from school to school, from administrator to administrator, but this is a way of really to document it, to actually walk, to talk through the process, look at, we've identified associated documents. What is the process that administrator goes through when they're evaluating, you know, that's their screening process with a, with the candidate when they first get the application? So we, we did, we documented all of that, and so that really now will serve as the starting point for discussions with the district leadership team. We're, we're starting with this and looking at our online application, because the goal is that the changes that we put in place will be for the upcoming hiring season. So while it might seem a long ways off, really, when you think about it, we're already in October, and really hiring season will start after the first of the year, plus we have winter break, and so there's really not that much time between now and winter break in, you know, in terms of working through some of this. But we did look at our online application for, for new teachers, and we asked the teachers nine open-ended questions, and, and then there's a multiple-choice survey that they take, and we use a service called Human Exventures where it does some scoring on, on their responses. And so what we want to make sure is that our hiring process in terms of, we want to make sure that it's not too much and that we're, it's not a deterrent, that are we asking too much? Do we need to simplify it? We're looking at possibly reducing the number of those open-ended questions. There's been a lot of value from the, the HumanX survey, and principals use that and they leverage that. So the goal for that will be to have that in place before winter break, so that our online application is modified as needed. While we may come up with, while we'll come up with some of the structures and some recommendations, we will look to also, Martha and I have talked about, well, do we need another set of eyes, like an HR professional? We don't, we don't have an HR director. So there are some resources out there that, whether they be individuals, I've already reached out to some, some former coworkers that have retired that were in that role, just to be able to take a look at it, identify, you know, do we have any more gaps that we want to look at? But then the next focus will be the recruiting, and we'll just do them in order. Online application, recruiting, and then the, the actual going through the hiring process and documenting. Once we get the, the hiring process kind of locked in for, for teachers, then we can start branching out into some of the other areas, like paraprofessionals, does it look the same? Obviously, there's going to be a different set of questions. And what we'll start to do is really build and document our processes and have sets of questions, with the end goal to have sets of questions that if you were a new principal in District 96, you could now reference, hey, this is how, this is our hiring process, these are all the documents that I need to be able to accomplish that. And we'll also, we'll also look at other recent types of positions that we've interviewed for and begin to pull those, you know, those interview questions and start evaluating those. So really looking forward, we had a, again, a really good meeting yesterday. A lot of energy, a lot of high energy in that group, and we made some big strides yesterday, just in our, in our first meeting. So I was very, very happy about that. Any questions about recruiting and hiring?
What's the thought about the open-ended questions?
Well, the thought is that, and actually, I did-
To ask one myself.
Pardon?
To ask an open-ended question myself.
Well, this, the thought is that, do we have, we're, we're looking at it from the standpoint of, if I'm, if I'm filling out applications at multiple places and I get to Riverside and there's nine open-ended questions versus two or three at others, the chances of them completing that application, you know, our goal is to get, get more candidates applying. I think there was a time, I know in our meeting yesterday, Todd Gierman referenced the fact that when he first started, he recalls having over 200 candidates for, for fifth grade opening, and now he's lucky to get 10. So, I mean, it's, the landscape is a lot different right now, and so let's make sure that we're not losing people before they even had their chance to fill out the application.
Yeah.
So to simplify the open-ended part, they, the, the multiple-choice component is, I believe it's 61 questions, so that's already, I mean, that's in and of itself, it's a much quicker process than the open-endeds. So, yeah, that would be the, the end goal, to just try to attract more people.
No, I mean, I really agree on mitigating kind of like barriers to applying. I wasn't aware that there could be such variations among, you know, kind of peer districts, you know, that some might only ask two or three in their application versus nine. So obviously, the questions that you all think will get to the best candidates. Outside of the online application component, so like the in, once, or if they're afforded like an in-person interview, is there streamlined questions, a base of questions that everybody kind of asks, or is it very subjective and left open to each building?
No, there was, there was about, well, when, when a lot of us started around 10 years ago, that's when, when the district began using HumanX Ventures. So they had, they had a list of structured questions through their service, and I know through working with, through one of the principals, Todd Gierman, like, he is using those questions, he knows that others are using those questions as well, but that's also part of this process. We're, we're working through one principal's process, and then we're able to go through all of them and talk about what they're doing similarly, but, but with the end goal of really settling on these are-
Could do a consistent practice.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. All the way through. Now, questions will also vary at times based on the role, you know, so that, we're also gathering those types of additional questions that might be asked because of that.
It's not a, what do you work that we're doing? Is there any type of like implicit bias training, et cetera, that the principals are getting via that? That could touch on higher-
Yeah, so that's actually our next, our next session is actually on implicit bias.
Yeah. I presume that would touch and help inform a more diverse hiring practice.
In terms of one of the other is personalized professional learning, what we began, well, the, there was a goal, the goals, one of the main goals centered around personalized professional learning was looking at our, the feedback, the responses from our PD survey. And so we'd identified two of the survey questions after every professional development session that we give, it's a, it's a state form, but we keyed in on two of the, the questions, I believe there's six or seven in total, but we keyed in on the two that we were looking to make improvements in. Those were that, we looked at the responses of, "This professional development will impact my social and emotional growth," or student, or student's social and emotional growth, and also that this, the professional, the professional development will impact my professional growth or student growth in regards to content knowledge, skills, or both. And in both, what, then what we did is we really just followed those all through the course of the year, gathered all the survey data, and looked at where did we start and where did we end? And we saw, you know, we saw a jump of nearly 8% from the disagree or strongly disagree, somewhat, or strongly disagree into the agree or strongly disagree on the, the first question, and then over 14% increase on the second from the beginning of year till the end. So it shows we're moving in that direction, in the right direction, and made some good, great strides last year. We will continue to track that the same this year. And it's something that we do compile every, every month or so. After we get a few sessions in, we start compiling the data and then start looking at it compared year, year over year. Any questions on that?
It's huge.
Yeah.
That's awesome to see. I was, I was blown away by the 14-point increase on the other one. And again, I said this, what, two, two or three meetings ago, and I think they were different questions, but we saw an improvement in those two questions as well. So I know that was a big sticking point for the staff collectively around that, just needing to be better. So this is awesome to see that it's moving what appears to be very quickly. People are grasping on like, yes, this is more valuable to me. So I, it just feels like there's been a very huge amount of progress in a very, relatively short period of time on, on this particular subject. So this is awesome.
Yeah, and I would, I would think that, you know, having that nice big jump in year one, we might be, obviously, our goal is to see continued improvement, might not be as significant, because we kind of, you know, it's, but just to set expectations, that the goal is to keep moving forward, but this was an excellent year one, and let's just keep it moving in that direction.
Yeah. And also to set expectations, you don't have much higher to go, you're not going to get to 100.
Yeah.
So, but stabilizing it, keeping it consistent, that'll be good, but it's huge.
Any questions regarding that? Any others? The, the final area that I'm just going to go over is, it's, it's also, we, we had identified with the climate and culture survey that we do within the district, we really hadn't identified a specific goal for, but the, the goal last year was, can we identify a goal? And whether or not we have a specific goal around it hasn't really been stated, but it's, we're looking at that data, because this, in terms of some of the information it also gives us is really related to employee satisfaction, which is also going to impact employee retention. And so last, last year, you know, again, as part as, we started looking at that, that, that data, with that, we, well, I'm going to, I'm going to bounce back here. With, we started implementing some of the, some of the onboarding items, you saw one of them, which was the, the new teacher rating card, which, you know, really, if you think about that, even the, at the, was it the last board meeting? Where we showed that? I think it really gave an opportunity like we, like, really that we hadn't been able to do before, to introduce, not only introduce, have people stay up and say their name, but you learned a little bit about them. There was some dialogue that went back and forth based on some of the responses, and I hope that you feel like you, you know these new teachers a little bit better than, than maybe you had in the past. And that's, that, that is, it's intent, but it's also an intent at the school level, at the district level, that we have a greater level of visibility of, we have this new person, we, they're more recognizable, we know a little bit about them through the introductions. We did those same introductions at the opening day in service, and it was, you know, a fun activity. But that, in that, in that DEIB, diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, it's that belonging component of, I feel part of something, I feel welcome. So those are just, one of the items that, as we look at our onboarding practices, that we want to make sure that we, we hit, that, that those new people, that their first year, they feel as if, that we're, we're getting feedback from them, we're checking in on to see how they're going, but that they're feeling welcome in, within their schools and, and the district. I think also the Mondays event, I think will also be a nice-
Tuesdays.
The Tuesdays event, yes. That's right. But I think that's also another, you know, that's another way for people to, to connect with, especially for new staff. I know that's, that's a huge, I think that'll be a big positive. But we'll continue to, to really try to operationalize some of those things that we looked at last year. We kind of ran out of time, and now we're focused on candidate hiring, and then we can go back to it. So our work will be very circular in that, we'll focus on, you know, every year we'll probably, you know, examine our application process, hiring process, onboarding, and kind of go in that order.
And continue to measure the climate and culture, essentially teacher morale, employee satisfaction-
Exactly.
Is a real important part, and it's really twofold around sort of understanding it as certain data points, but also it's data that's very much owned by our teachers around, through their building leadership teams and really creating actionable data that, that they can really impact, just more connections with each other, creating those opportunities. We knew that climate and culture has to be sort of an everybody, an everybody kind of thing, certainly.
And, and speaking to that, the climate and culture survey, we did have, we had the beginning of year survey that was administered at the, kind of the middle of last month, beginning, middle of last month. And again, from looking at data, we've been tracking that data since we've been taking the survey. And we have seen, we've seen, you know, increases in different areas, we, you know, there's been some variances with it, but we did, really did focus on that, you know, areas of strength that we identified. And, you know, the survey is broken down into these, like, these four different component areas. But in terms of these, the care and support and the vitality and wellbeing components, and there's some descriptors there, those were ones that, where we feel that the results were very strong, and then we also have some areas where we could, we can improve. And then that gives us data to then, you know, to build around, to, to identify strategies to, to address those. And we'll continue the surveys throughout the year.
In each of those, each of those four categories, it's like a series of questions, not just a single question?
Right. There's a series of questions, and even within that, that, there's, they're kind of categorized. So then, you know, it's not just-
So maybe like five different questions, but they're kind of in that umbrella of care, they're, they're trying to get at care and support as, okay, that's how, yeah, that's how I'm used to it. So I was just confirming, that's the way they did it.
Yeah, and even in the data, the way it's reported, they're not reporting like answers to questions, it's more of, again, it's a group, it could be multiple questions that are reporting on a subset category of that category. So we'll continue to look at, look at that data and respond accordingly.
And under that, the building leadership teams consist of a small group of staff in addition to the administration?
So like, Todd Gierman runs the Ames Building, each principal runs their own building leadership team, and they have a representative, representation across the grade levels and then usually like special area teachers as well.
Each grade level, okay.
Some of them have a paraprofessional that sits on them, trying to think if they all do. So it varies a little bit of size based on the school size?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But there, I mean, I attended the last one, and, I mean, it's, it's a nice crowd there when we're there.
Oh, the all-district leadership team, which is all the BOP.
Well, and that's what I was getting at, you said all-district leadership teams, like, that's probably a good body of people, right?
Oh, yeah. It was in, it was in the Hauser Library, and every seat, you know, we had, it was a full house.
I'm just, I guess where I was going with it is, I'm glad that we have the staff seeing the results, because I share, we openly share these, and I actively put it back on them of like, okay, you helped me interpret what this means, because I'm probably going to get it wrong type thing. So I love the fact that they're seeing it and kind of help driving it and everything. So should give us a lot better opportunities for improvement coming directly from the people that it's impacting, so.
Yeah, and that, you know, and that really was one of the core activities of that meeting was, you know, having them look over the information, kind of reporting out, you know, how are you interpreting, interpreting it? And, yeah, it was very much a sharing and collaborative experience.
One thing to kind of connect that back to the recruiting and hiring practices, because this all seems very cohesive to me, anyway, it makes a lot of sense. The diversity, equity, the open, including an open-ended diversity, equity, inclusion, belongingness, a lot of words there. Obviously, we haven't picked that yet, that's what we want to do, that one just kind of stood out to me, because I think it's like, as you're recruiting, how do you recruit people that feel like they want to be here? And that's hard through an application process on its own, so I'm really glad we have like the video now and trying to continue to tell that story, and then you're specifically asking for it, like inviting people in, hopefully that'll, that'll help the application process feel a lot more inviting. And then, as you were kind of saying, like, going through that first year, that's a, a big scary jump, changing jobs, right? Like, you have no idea what you're getting into, and man, I know a lot of people that made that shift and went, boy, that was a really bad decision. So, so I really like the cohesive thought process of how we get through from like start to finish and then the continued support once we have it in there. So it seems very well thought out.
And, and we, we identified last year, we, we identified a group of like 15 diversity, equity, inclusion questions, and then the group went through, and independently, we, we ranked them, rated them, what we thought would be a good question. There was one question that everybody had as one to include.
Okay.
And so we, so we reached consensus very quickly on, okay. And not that it's going to be that exact question, we know the flavor of the question that we want to ask. And so that, that we'll, we'll be evaluating with the district leadership team on whether it, because that question came up, well, is it a part of our application process, is it part of our, our like screener, or is it part of the interview process? But in looking through our questions that were embedded with, in, beyond the online application, there were some, there were some diversity, equity, inclusion questions already there.
Okay.
So, so, yeah.
Who does our screening? I didn't, I wasn't even thinking about the screening piece of that. Is, is it just up to the, whoever the hiring principal is to kind of comb through and figure out who they want to interview?
So if it's a, if it's a certified, you know, if it's for a teaching position at the school, the, the building principal will go through and kind of take a look at the applications. It was interesting to, you know, to hear about, you know, well, what are, what's their process? And it will be, I think it'll be a good, really good experience to get all of our principals to just really talk about what their, what their process is and what goes into, to that. But-
I have some other thoughts to share, if you want them at any point in time, I don't need to express them here, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, Don. Okay. Let me get back over here. Next up is Education Committee, Ms. Kaylec. Kathy, are you?
Yes. So Martha and I met this week and talked about strategic plan Goal Four, which is family and community partnerships.
It was a great time to Marlo, because, as some of you, I think, know, Marlo has been on Family Community Partnerships Action Team. I think it's where you sort of first came acquainted with some of the district leadership initiatives, et cetera. So we have not met yet, we're meeting on October 26th for our first meeting. We're continuing to even accept new members. We've had parents that just sort of reach out and have asked if they'd join us. As you know, this is kind of a unique action team with both teachers and parents on the action team. I shared the draft agenda with all of you here. I would say some of our work is still around refining what the work really is. So last year, as you know, we did a family engagement survey and really looked at those results, and then really, you know, tried to dig in and just understand sort of where that takes us in terms of some of our direction and vision for the, the action team. I also feel more and more that the parent leadership team, that's been a longstanding committee of the PTA and PTO presidents, as well as a board member representative, myself, and then administrators, principals, and district administrators, kind of based on the agenda item as needed, really, I feel that more and more a sense of purpose around making sure that we inter, kind of interconnect those two groups, because I think they're both really working toward the same big idea of making sure that families feel really engaged and connected in the school district. So continuing to do that. So one of the things that came up that I think was, really pointed out that direct connection, was this idea of parent ambassadors, of kind of a, in an ideal sort of a one-to-one parent match, a current District 96 parent from specific school with a new parent, which includes all new kindergarten families, as well as families that arrive with their children at a grade other than kindergarten, which certainly happens throughout, throughout our district, all the way K through, K through eight. And different district, or different schools, as you can imagine, did it a little bit differently. Actually, Marlo did, took on that role for Hollywood School, in addition to her role as board member. And you, you should share for a minute what you did as, as the lead parent ambassador for Hollywood School.
I, so I, I make the weekly, I'm the corresponding secretary for the PTA, so I make the weekly newsletter, and in the newsletter I had put in there kind of what the parent ambassador program would be. I had put out, I put in a few emails, and I talked about it at parent night, and I had QR codes to sign up using a Google form. And we ended up having two families sign up to have an ambassador to assist them with becoming a Husky. One was a kindergarten family and one was a second-grade family in the CD classroom. And then I had six families sign up to be ambassadors, and so for the, so I had more than I needed, which was great. And so for the two that- And so for the two that, that did sign up, I matched them up with a parent who had a kid in the same class or in the same grade, and that worked out well. I was like slightly disappointed about the numbers, but then I reminded myself that they're very small, and-
But you did a lot to welcome new families, even if they said they didn't want a parent ambassador to sort of, sort of shepherd them throughout the whole school year. You did a lot to welcome all new families.
Yeah, we had, actually, different numbers. So we had, we had 21 new students total. That was kindergarten, two kiddos in the CD classroom and one in fifth grade. We did, we had lawn signs made, and we put them out. I asked parents first if they wanted it, so 19 agreed. And so they all had lawn signs out, which my husband actually went around and picked up today. And then everybody got like a drawstring backpack goodie bag that had a T-shirt in it, their first Hollywood T-shirt, and it had a sticker and like one of those thing, what are the things, the brag tag, the things that they put on their backpack that I still don't understand?
Spirit sick.
Spirit sick, thank you. And then information about the PTA, or something else. Oh, and we had volunteer club painted rocks, and I wrote Hollywood Rocks on them, and they're blue rocks, it's fun. Could be dangerous, but, so everybody got that, regardless of whether or not they wanted a parent ambassador. And we're going to keep doing that. We, we have enough of that stuff to do, I think, for the next five years, so.
And each school, as I mentioned, did it a little bit differently. Some of the larger schools have sort of a parent ambassador or a parent mentor that's going to connect with new families, or did connect with new families. So I see it as something that we want to continue to sort of grow and evolve, and Marlo had even shared the letter that she sent to new families, again, with this idea of engaging families, making sure families feel very connected. We've also looked at the issue of transition. So fifth to sixth grade transition in particular is an area around, I think it's a time when families tend to get a little nervous, it's, it feels like a big transition to go from elementary to middle. One of the things that we really kind of took a deep dive, close look at last year was this idea of outdoor education and how the sixth grade outdoor education, which is a great tradition in District 96, really the, the purpose behind it, the early development of it, was to really bring fifth grade students who've come from four different elementary schools to kind of a unique opportunity to sort of connect and intersect and, and start feeling more like a one Hauser school as opposed to coming from the four different elementaries. And as you all know, that overnight trip had to take a break because of the pandemic, and then the camp that was hosting it was no longer able to do it. So the, the sort of, the mentor chaperone, lead person, Meredith Harvey is her name, really took it upon herself to bound and determined to find another camp that would be able to take all sixth grade Hauser students in. So they had a two-night overnight, I know some of you, right, Stephanie and David's child also participated in that, and I heard it was a great success. I was talking to April and Chris yesterday again, and they just shared how the kids just really acclimated, did great, they were, you know, pleasantly surprised that there were not children asking to go home and see their family. April and Chris also slept, I know, on very thin mattresses, as did the other staff that accompanied them. So just a big thank you to the staff that did it, but also just valuing the importance of it. There was kind of this moment where it's like, maybe this could just go away now, you know, like it had, it had been a, you know, it's, it's hard to take kids out into the woods for really well, three days, two nights, right? So out of their comfort zone, but also what I kept hearing back from the staff involved was it's, it's just so valuable. So we had about, I think it was 39 students that didn't go. The district provides, obviously, for students that need that, that cost support, but just for whatever reason, either other commitments or just a, a lack of comfort, they did do a Hauser sort of onsite, offsite opportunity. They went to the zoo, they went to the Go Eight course, and they did some other activities within Hauser School. So really trying to give the children that did not go on the overnight a special experience also with that same goal in mind of just connecting. So we'll continue to focus on the fifth to sixth grade transition and welcome parent ideas and staff ideas around that, but that's just sort of one of the highlights of it.
And just on that one, the, the 39 or whatever you just said, they just elected not to go, right?
Correct, right.
We, we cover-
It wasn't discipline, it wasn't money, yeah, yeah.
Because I think if, if there is, if it's truly a financial hardship, we, we, yeah, take care of it, yeah, okay.
I don't think it was for lack of being aware, multiple communications went out, you know, languages, I mean, the kids were obviously talking about it as well, so.
And we, and we knew, because there's always been some number, I know, since I've been here, and just wanting to absolutely ensure that it's not about money.
Yeah.
Yeah, that removing that barrier as easily as possible, so. But I think there's just a comfort level with it, and we understand that, too. So creating that alternative opportunity at the school is also important.
And I think just also kudos to all of the, I mean, certainly to Mrs. Harvey who spearheaded it, but also, I know, took on a lot of questions from families, myself included. It wasn't just her doing the research and finding a lot of families that had very specific questions about sleeping arrangements, you know, privacy, restroom, chaperoning, lights out, so there was a lot of that that happened. And then, you know, for children who are on medications, a very thorough process to ensure that the nurse had them in like their containers with the forms sold out, signed by doctors. I mean, it really left you feeling like, okay, no, this is, this is okay, it's going to be okay, you know?
As April and Chris shared with me yesterday, at about 5:30, they shifted from principal and assistant principal to just mom and dad, you know, to these kids. So I think they felt a lot of just connection and ownership and support, and, and I'm sure that was true for all the staff that went, so. Family learning event is another important idea that this group came, did not come up with. It's really something that had existed in District 96 before. Last year, you know, we hosted a family math night, there'll be at least one family learning event, but it's going to be math or science or reading. The idea was to sort of switch the academic area year to year, but we also know that math was kind of an area that families were clamoring for. So that'll be decided yet, we have February 28th on hold on the calendar for that. And then the other, the other area that I wanted to just touch on that I think relates to the family and community partnerships, I think there's a couple areas yet, but one is the West Suburban Consortium for Academic Excellence. So as a board, you've heard about that group. It's 15 school districts right here in our area that joined together, they've been joined together through sort of a formal in slash informal consortium, with the big idea being of creating events for students and families that really we perhaps would not be able to do alone, right? So it's a lot of small districts, a lot of you are maybe familiar with the art fair that's held at Chaney Mansion every spring. It's these 15 school districts coming together, it's a lovely event. There used to be a W F C E Science Fair at Brookfield Zoo that went away during the pandemic, it's actually coming back this year. Now the, I think the pandemic is officially over, and we're able to sort of return to some of those large group events. There's also a civic action weekend where we partner with the Northwestern Center for Talent Development, send kids into kind of a more urban setting, into the city of Chicago. It used to be an overnight, it's, last year was just done as a single day event. But these are all really unique events and opportunities, they're kind of small scale, so sometimes we don't, you know, they're, they're not probably advertised broadly across the district, but I think they, they do a lot to meet the goals within the Family Community Partnerships Action Team as well. And then we have all become familiar, our district administrative team, something called the REACH Project, which is resilience education to enhance community healing, really with this big idea of post-pandemic, how do we need to pull districts together in more supportive networks, to look at some, a number of ideas. And I actually will be part of this Illinois State Board of Ed and REACH project that's really dedicated to building bridges and strengthening school community partnerships for student success. And so I'm eager to join that. We, we are, our first session is toward the end of this month, and then we'll be virtually meeting over six times over the course of the year. And I hope to learn more about just other opportunities, other activities, other things that school districts are doing to continue to reach out to families. I know it's something that as a board, you've also talked about, that I think we're really fortunate in that District 96 is a really engaged parent community, and yet sort of being engaged, because we don't hear a lot. So I know there's areas, areas for improvement here, and I'm looking forward to sort of working on this, both sort of from that kind of theoretical, more academic and network perspective, as well as the ongoing work with the Family Community Partnerships Action Team. So I obviously continue to communicate. Wesley, you mentioned the video, that was very intentional around another way to engage families and engage our staff. That really started with this idea of engaging our staff around the strategic plan work. So our attendance is strong at events, I think it's, it's wonderful, families show up for parent teacher conferences and fall parent nights, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that's not our area of concern, some districts are really trying to, you know, bring families in for kind of that basic level of engagement and information about their child schooling, but we know that there's more that we can learn from each other, and trying to find those, you know, two-way or more than one-way communication opportunities are really valuable. So that's a goal for update for now. Any questions?
It does not appear so.
Okay. Round to goal five.
All right. So up next, we, well, Dave's not here, Finance Committee, so I will, I guess just Jim, you got, all right, I'll give it, hand it over to you, Jim.
I've got an update on goal five. Goal five is stewardship of resources, so we're going to develop and sustain effective, efficient, and equitable use of all our resources, and optimize operations for improved student achievement and fiscal responsibility. And like under improved student achievement, that to me means support the other four goals and help them get, pay for what they need. We look at the, the indicators, we have, there are not a lot of updates to this, because this be rating comes out once a year. So 4.0 for the data year 2022, and it looks like when our audit's done in 2023, then we should be at 4.0 again.
And that 4.0 is, is the top ranking?
Yes. And number two there, our expenditures, we said we'll keep them under CPI, which was 7%, but I think the spirit of how that was written was that our property tax or tax levy would be going up by CPI, and we'd keep our expenses at whatever the tax levy's going up. So I didn't change it, but our tax levy was able to go up 5%, and that's the max. And to me, to hit that goal, you really need to keep it under 5%, not 7%. And our, the budget that we just approved two months ago shows expenditures up 4.5%. So we kept it under the-
I'm glad you clarified that, actually, noting, and maybe for future slides, you can note that that's CPI and then listed at 7%, because I, I did have a question of, did we really say seven? That seemed pretty high to me. And I guess CPI has been pretty high.
Just for the cheer.
Right.
Hopefully that goes down very quick.
I'll, I'll get both of them on there somehow. Let's see, Facility Maintenance Repair Improvement Projects, they are on schedule and within budget, and we'll have a report, I think, next month from Ramesh and how the summer like-
Joel's going to share a little about facility advisory on that, yeah?
Maintenance Work Order Response, our goal is to get the first response out in less than one business day. And this is a new system for our maintenance department, and in September is a pretty busy time when, the beginning of the year, I think it's been most of, well, it's the first time the heat goes on, where the air's not working, so there's not people around all summer checking every room to see if things are working. But when we first got back, there was a lot, a lot to respond to. And, and our average days response was 2.4 days for September, so not bad with all the work we had to get done. Number five, the Technology Five-Year Plan, to keep cost increases less than CPI on a rolling average. And for the last few years, Don has done a three-year plan, and that, that has been under CPI, and we will, it will be upping that to a five-year plan soon. Number six, the Technology Work Order Response is less than one business day, and that's been actually pretty well under one. So I, I would say they exceeded that, that goal. And those are our KPIs for goal number five. Any questions?
Not to get too deep on number four here with the maintenance work, but do you expect that to go down and stabilize for the rest of the year, because it's just like a beginning of the year thing, or?
Well, at the beginning of the year, it's a new system for us, it was in technology earlier, and so we could run it.
Oh, literally a new system, okay, all right.
And, and there's ways that they can be responded to from your phone, and I would guess that people in the technology department are a little quicker at doing it than people in the maintenance department, it's not, it's a whole new skill for them, so.
Okay.
We'll get there, but-
Yeah. When you said system, I was thinking just like procedural process type things, not a actual like software system that they were trying to learn with it, so, okay.
When we're saying a response, is this just a response saying, I'm going to get, I acknowledge receipt of this work order, and I'm putting it on a schedule, because obviously if you have a part that needs to be ordered or something?
Yeah, so there's an automatic response that, so you know it was submitted, that is really generic. And then what we're talking about here is a response like, oh, that's a summer project, we're putting it on the list for the summer, so you're not watching for it to happen sooner, or parts are on order, or we called the continental, HVAC guy's going to have to look at that. So some information and expectation, set the expectation, that's where we want to get to.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim. And then we will pass it over to Mr. Marlo for the facilities update.
Thank you, Wesley. We met on the 26th, obviously, that was Martha, Jim, Ramesh, the architect, David and I. You see the agenda here, but the highlights are that we're looking, actually in general, at some improvements to the Hauser and Central space, just there's, as Martha has noted, there's always a desire for more space to do something. One of these elements is potentially a bathroom in the third floor, but that's going to take some thought, because-
It's actually renovating the bathroom into a smaller learning space.
Sorry, renovate, you're right, sorry.
Taking a bathroom that's underutilized, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not just a bathroom, it's more like a bathroom area.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you, I remember the-
Sounds terrible to say we're renovating a bathroom into a student learning space, but-
It's a bathroom that's meant for, or two bathrooms, I think, that are meant-
I think it's like a stall area, yeah.
Yeah, and so to, what do we really need up there, and is it possible to make another room out there for, like you said, a small space? The central gym floor, there's a HVAC issue, so that's, has damaged some of the floor, and so there needs to be some thought into what the repair or improvement can be, and as with all things, the deeper you go, the more expensive it potentially gets, and changes could cost money. So a lot of these are, the architect has to investigate more and kind of define some parameters around what do we want versus what is appropriate. Still going to be thinking about those Hauser locker room improvements, but we really want to think about what's needed there, and so that's a more of a long-term item. Ames will be tuck pointed in 2024, that will not be a problem with summer school or anything like that, we can either shift building or space uses, or direct the contractor to work in certain areas when we need access. Finally, or not really finally, sorry, Al Blythe, we're still continuing to look at that playground and the tennis courts. And Hauser Auditorium is, by all reports, a great success, and we actually, in the end, we ended up with the better plus renovation, because we talked about some improvements to the equipment that wasn't originally anticipated, but is, certainly I've heard from some users, some people who are preparing for the play, that it's definitely better. Finally, we have Hauser Central, we will be hearing about a draft timeline at our next meeting. The biggest thing, and we mentioned this before, is the work will not be limited to the summer, some will begin in the spring, and so there, some, there will be some disruption to parking, that's just the space either, we, we either work on the space or we park there, you can't do both. And then also the, the new field will have to take time to grow, so it will not be a me- And then also the new field will have to take time to grow, so it will not be immediately available in the fall.
So they're going to seed it instead of sod it, okay?
Um, even sod, even sod takes time.
Six to eight months, we were told. I'm sorry, grass, sod, same difference, right?
It's, in my experience, anything green to, needs to be allowed to properly establish itself before it is durable.
Okay.
That, that's just, that's the nature of how green things work, so.
So that was, I'll just interject because it's something that we've already started talking about with both Central and Hauser leadership. And we'll then go to the PE department, et cetera, is the, the idea that we're, we're not going to have that grassy field for even fall of '24.
Correct. And then also another long-term item is looking at libraries and especially Hauser Library to see if there's some better space utilization with how shelving is distributed in some of those back offices. So that's, that's really a long-term, no, no, I suppose the short version is we've got small improvements on our mind, but nothing has been definitively determined. And we'll continue to, to just research and develop. Questions?
Book from head into the auditorium last meeting looks pretty nice. I mean, from what you can see, most of it's behind the wall, but the speakers and the sound system and the booth and all that, and it looks, the seats and everything, it looks really nice.
They developed some training materials, so the users have access to that and they'll do some more. Because I know I've spoken to one of the tech operators and they're learning on the way.
Yeah.
So it's the way it should be.
Definitely would be a good thing if the microphones are no longer cutting in and out when kids are getting their performances.
That is very important to people.
And that's been part of the new system, right, is the wire, new wireless microphones. And it seemed that the cutting in and out of the sound in the Hauser Auditorium was, was also the infrastructure electrical, it was sort of like, was the equipment cutting out or was the whole system just not carrying the audio? So you think we fixed all of that, right, Don?
It's actually because of the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there was, because they reused some of the old like receivers. And then the microphones had, you know, the transmitter components, all those, that, that equipment really needed to be replaced. So the junior high, the staff that used that equipment the most, they really identified what their needs were. They came up with a list of things, so we were able to, I know the stuff was, was ordered. I'm not sure if they came in.
And then as you know, the control booth got moved so that it has a view of the stage, so that is more interactive.
Where was it?
It used to be behind the stage, so you could not see, the lighting and audio people could not see the stage from where they were at. So they were operating. They were operating blindly. It forces some creativity, but.
And then I know that the stage lights needed some adjustments because if the lights were adjusted, then the speakers were put in, which then I think were somewhat obstructing, so that those have all been.
Yeah, there's a thing, and actually Kathy's working on a nice sign. So the fall play and then the fall band orchestra choir events, we kind of debated like, do you do a ribbon cutting in an auditorium? The work is very infrastructure. It makes a big difference. It costs a lot of money, but, you know, what do people really see? So there's going to be signs up outside the auditorium, kind of welcome to the event, thank you to the Board of Education, thank you to DLA Architects, and thank you to the whole community really for supporting these projects. So we thought that would just be a nice way to, yeah. Kathy still has that really big scissors to cut a ribbon someday, like we were hoping to do that at Ames and then we had a global pandemic, so I don't know which, which project should get that, but.
Maybe once we get the Central Hauser campus, I feel like that's sort of the core culmination of like all the project. Maybe we can just make one big celebration out of it.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the signs idea is probably really good because I don't remember if it was you or David I was talking to, but it's like, yeah, if you didn't really know the work was doing, you wouldn't know the work was done. So having the sign, we really did do stuff here.
Yeah.
Can't see. All right, cool. Well, I'll be interested to hear from folks that manage the play, how they thought the improved system was, so. Cool. All right. Anything else from anybody? Question? Nope. All right, then let's move on to Policy Committee with Ms. Gunn.
Still waiting on the press. I, I thought I would check my emails. It's going to be there, I know it. But it always comes out right before a meeting, hot off the presses, but not today. However, what you see attached in Board Book, just by way of reminder, and perhaps this is new to Marlo and Selena, but I think the board does an excellent job at monitoring and staying on top of our policies. Much of that is due in part to our Press and Press Plus membership that makes, ensures that we are, you know, constantly reviewing and monitoring, as well as being mindful of the updates, both those that are required for us to implement and how they might affect our district, et cetera. But IASB also has this monitoring cycle, a couple different options that they present to boards in a way in which as a board, you can kind of continually be reviewing your policies. And the board felt, for the most part collectively, that it would be beneficial for us to kind of do this on our own in addition to the work that we do alongside press. So it's really just kind of homework for you during a certain month to peruse the relevant section. And if there are any questions or anything that stands out to you, you know, we can then discuss them likely at a Cal meeting in the future. I will take full responsibility. This kind of fell off the radar for a bit and that was likely my miscommunication to Kathy and Martha. But we're going to kind of give it the good old college try again and bring it back. So for like the month of November, over the next kind of three months, spending time with Section Six, which covers instruction of our policy manual, which can be found online or, I don't know, want to kill a bunch of trees, we can probably print you a big old stack. And some, there might be some, like if press comes out and there's some overlap with Section Six, like then there would just be that more familiarity with it. And it just allows us to have like a closer look at them and be more familiar with them on an ongoing basis, not just when press comes out. And it would, and when it does, we can be like, oh, that's right. We just kind of read that recently and it's fresh in your mind. Any questions, thoughts? Does that all still sound good to people? We'll continue, we'll try this, so.
Do we do the one-year plan or the?
Oh, that's a great question, Marlo. So there are a lot of plans. Many of them feel very confusing. The one that is most straightforward, but perhaps the most, I don't know, of all the ones maybe cumbersome, is the option one, one-year plan. But I believe that's the one that we all kind of decided was the most straightforward. Also helped for board members that were, you know, based on terms, how much time you have, like if you didn't have two years left. So we just stuck with the one-year plan, not the hybrid, not the two-year, where every couple months you review some of the sections. And one of the times we did it, one of the board members was like, I just did it right before this meeting. It took me like 20 minutes. So you're just kind of generally, you know, reading them, familiarizing yourself with them. But everything really should be, you're not like looking for glaring issues or like everything should be up to date where it needs to be, but it's just a good way to become more familiar with the policies.
More like skimming the general intent of the policy rather than like. Legal soundness of the wording and phrasing and stuff like that, so, yeah. Cool. Thank you, Stephanie.
Yeah, so that's it. And we'll just hang tight for the next, for the autumn press update.
All right. And then I am realizing I completely skipped over public comment at the beginning. Do we have any at the end? Did we have any at the beginning? I didn't see anybody here. Okay, all right. Okay. Well, in that case, that brings us to future meeting dates. So our next meeting is October 18th, 2023, at the Hauser LRC, 7:00 PM. I actually, I have to travel for work, so Joel's going to lead that meeting for us. November 1st, 2023, Committee, the whole meeting, 7:00 PM at Blithe, finally getting back to Blithe, ready to see the updates there. And November 15th, regular biz meeting at Hauser LRC at 7:00 PM. And that is the end of this meeting, meeting adjourned.